Yeah, it just changed. It just changed. I don't know, man, because I do that. I have to stay with them. I have no chance to get it. But like I say, it was my first meeting. We were going through the inspection. And we did run through this. Like, what it is? It's too good, you know, yeah, I think it's a... Because I mean, she just said it. Yeah.
Good evening. Go ahead and call this work session to order. I'm gonna ask Councilman Short if he'll be so kind to give us the invitation.
Yes, I love you. Dear Father, come this evening, bow here and humble your heart. I'm asking you, dear Father, to guide this council in their deliberation of the business of people. Have all of our discussion be civil and in order. Whatever we do, they're to be for the good of the citizens themselves. And most of all, they're to be for the citizens themselves. We will always be reminded to keep you in the forefront, to keep you in the midst. Because we know as long as you there, you would never go wrong. And you're not gonna misguide us. You're gonna lead us down the path that we need to go. We're gonna always remember to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory. In the holy name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Short. Uh, so the summoning requests, I received two additional summoning requests this afternoon coming up. Want to be on the work session, so I'm gonna bring forward, uh, the two summonings. We're looking at three summonings in all, okay? First we have Mr. Tom Hithy, Freedom by Information Forum. So, how you doing?
Yes, you want Susan to see you?
Oh.
All right, uh, you remember a little over two months ago, I came before the council, uh, meeting?
Yes, sir.
Uh, bringing all the speed on the type of problems I ran into trying to get freedom information out of this other clerk office? And not only the procedures saying that this form was required, but the form itself. And how much research I had done into the form about what is valid on here and what's not valid on here? I'd asked for four things to try to correct this. If you remember, I went through why this form is there, what year it was put in the board, and why it was put in the board, and what authority it has. Okay, um, this form is, as I told y'all back then, this form cannot be required under Alabama Supreme Court case Chambers versus, uh, Birmingham News of nineteen eighty-nine. Supreme Court case said that a furnished form from an entity cannot be required. But yet they contend it is to be required. I talked to you about the vetting process, that the request for information has to go through. All right? Four things I asked for on that meeting two months ago were to remove the reference here to the state statute about the Freedom of Information Act. Because nothing on this form comes from that other than saying what you want. Everything else on this form comes from Alabama Supreme Court cases with one exception. Okay, uh, I asked for that to be removed or either put on as a footnote. All right? The second thing I asked for was, um, was, let's see, that was, that that be removed, that down here where it says this contract of prior restraint be either re- revergaged or either removed. Because the case law that they came up with down here was from eighteen eighty-two. And there is no case law that says you're required to sign a unilateral contract in order to receive public, um, records. There is none. Now, this little thing they found here, yes, there was a case in eighteen eighty-two where a prisoner was aggravating people and they put that in there. You couldn't use it to start rumors and stuff. But nowhere does it say you have to sign a contract in order to receive a public record. It's just, it's just not there. Okay? Um, the third thing I'd ask about was for, to make sure that the custodial clerks in the city hall, I know you say, well, that's unadministrated. But they used, they said, why are you using this? Because the city council, uh, developed it, approved it, I've been instructed, I've gotta use it. Okay. It's not really the case. So that needs to be worked out, that, that they can receive requests for information on forms other than one supplied by the city. And that is according with, uh, like I said, uh, the, the state statute. The fourth thing I asked about was the cost. Right now, the cost is a dollar seventy-five for the first twenty sheets. No, excuse me, a dollar twenty-five for the first, uh, twenty sheets and then a dollar seventy-five thereafter. So if you want a copy of the forty-seven page city budget, seventy-five bucks. Now, there are a lot of folks who can't afford that, you know? So I asked that that be looked at. And those are the four things I'd ask to be looked at.
My pleasure, Mr. Harris. We have relegated that assignment to Councilman.
Right.
He will be having a administrative meeting.
Yeah, this week, hopefully. The email I sent you, I copied to him, so he knows the four things.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he'll be me on him.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Justice Martin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. Uh, our church is a petition to ask to be annexed back into city limits itself. We're located out on Citizen Parkway, twenty-nine, twenty-nine. And so we have our, our list of, you know, our members here on the petition. So you'll take that? Good. Thank you, Mr. Benjamin.
What's the name of the church, sir?
Uh, Christian Grace Apostolic.
Who's that? Should I go to the building of the Brownus Community Church?
I'm just gonna copy for y'all. And sorry about having to have a copy of the petition like we asked you. Um, come, come back for a second, Bishop. Let me, let me go ahead and tell y'all, I can't even see you, Councilman Johnson. This is Bishop Marshall, he's our pastor. Uh, we've always believed Christian Grace to be inside of the city limits. Uh, they've been serviced as such until, until lately, about a few months or so maybe or so. They found out and were told that our church, he is not in, uh, uh, the city limits. When, when the matter was redrawn, we saw that, well, we thought that the skate, from the skating rink back was in the city limits. And I don't think he is now that they're saying. So, uh, we thought we had the skating rink, tunnel cable, uh, my church, and a form of backers. There's businesses beside it. I don't know the name of it.
It's a truck.
Yeah.
It's any kind of truck.
Okay, then you have this vacant lot, then you have Cedar Terrace, and then you have, um, Pope Chestnuts Church and Freshwater.
Yeah.
So I was going backwards. We saw all of that was in the city and they have recently learned, uh, or have been told that it is not. And I took a picture of that matter, meant to text it to you so you can view it with me. Uh, but we always thought it was. And so, uh, this is a petition to annex Christian Grace Apostolic Church, uh, back into the city of seven, which we thought it was already in.
Councilman Short?
I've always advocated for this city to grow. Every elected official in any city has two obligations. That is to investigate the cities, of the citizens, and to expand its boundaries. I've advocated that you annex the corridors, uh, the east, west, and the north corridors. And that's a simple thing to do. There's no residence dividend in that area which would not require vote other people. This is one of the most simplest things that this city or any city could do. For that fact, is to expand its city boundaries. And I want to remind my colleagues, if we don't do that, if you look at the city of Marshall, Huntsville, and Circum Marshall. And it wasn't done overnight. It was done over a long period of time. And I would encourage this council, and this is not the first rodeo that we spoke about this. It's just that we've done what we do. We come up here, we talk, and that's all we do. We need to move forward with this, my colleagues. Let's put together and commit to address this, uh, once and for all. And let's bring the resolve to expand our city limits by annexing our corridors, which include businesses. It would mean more of a fine police protection for them. It would mean more revenues for this city. And that is something that I'm gonna encourage this council to do. Let's stop talking about annexations and let's move forward with it.
Councilman?
I, I would give, I'll make a copy of the petition and give everyone. I meant to sign this at church, so I'm gonna sign it now. I meant to sign it when it was passed around that church. Um, but I'm signing now and I'll give everybody a copy. You two mayor, I'll give you a copy for your office as well, so that everyone can have a view of the members who have signed this petition for annexation back into the city itself, which they were in the first place. Oh, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Short. Let me say that to probably all the other businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop.
Next, we have Mr. Johnny Earl Harris Jr. Mr. Harris, please come forward.
Hello, I am Robin.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm the owner of James Record Service, and I'm trying to get on the nine-one-one dispatch rotation for the city. And, uh, we've been going through some loops and turns and pulls, but we're finally here. I have ordinance saying that I need your approval to get on the rotation.
Okay. I'm, I know. Yeah, it's an ordinance, is it?
Yes, it's an ordinance. Yes, I have. It's fifteen pages.
Well, I thought on the line, you just get into the system.
Well, I have.
But I wouldn't have ordered.
Yes, I have.
Um, what happened? I think this was a problem back in the years when Tom Records was trying to get into it during, uh, perp administration and for some reason or another. There's a lot of things that you gotta make sure you're updating with them, and we're gonna work with you to make sure you get that. Uh, like license, and his lights gotta be right on his truck. You don't have to write all that, so we're gonna make sure you get everything you need, but, but I appreciate you coming forward to council and making sure that you got everything legally that you should have. So I just think we just need, uh, look into it, what you said, Mr. President, and that's the move forward.
Well, I mean, I have everything.
Okay.
I have the boom trucks.
I mean, you have a copy of it, I mean?
I have a better time right here. Yeah, I have. I have the boom trucks, I have the road van, I have the lights, I have the required, uh, perks to be able to wait. I have everything.
You have insurance?
I have insurance, million-dollar liability, hundred thousand car.
Put me waiting on to get these tax dollars.
I have the license.
The cop, I mean?
I got everything, man. We just need our. I got the fence, six foot, old ten cars on the minimum. I have everything.
You ready to do the bill?
Yes.
Because usually, I mean, if you have it in any place, you can just be, uh, in a nine-one-one rotation.
So the ordinance, Mr. Harris, you went through fifteen pages?
Yes.
Does it, it, it sends you to the council?
Yeah, it's on the phone right there. Says I have to go to the council, uh, but I need an inspection from the police department.
Have you tried to get that?
I've been trying to get my inspection. Nobody will come out and look.
How long have you been trying to get your inspection?
Since, uh, January the twentieth.
Is the mayor, mayor?
January twenty-ninth?
Yeah. Well, there's a license, right?
Yes, sir. Okay.
How long has he been expecting, sir?
On the truck?
Yeah.
Truck for?
Truck.
And you've gone to where the process?
The city doesn't expect it. Um, I mean, where he's been to?
He said, that's what he was told.
Oh, he's the part. Oh. I had to find out who he talked to. I mean, like, this is my first hearing, so I didn't find out who he talked to.
Just find out how long it takes.
Right.
I don't want to take it.
If, if, if he didn't give us the information too, I can find out who he talked to.
Have we, can we copy off of your?
Yeah, yeah.
We got license registration. We got all your receipts.
Mayor, I'll make a copy of this right here and get it to y'all.
And this is a quick letter here next week.
Thank you.
So. I'll just get that.
I can, I can.
Can I have a copy of this?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris, the issue is, uh, once again reviewed by, uh, the appropriate person. As once the mayor sees that the inspection take place, I would encourage this council to.
Just go forward.
Me too. Seems like everything is in place.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
Do you, uh, have everything ready to vote on tomorrow, Mr. President?
If the mayor can, uh, get this first.
Yeah, where's the mayor? The TV is in the, is the mayor over there?
He just had me just to grab some of the board that I got for the, for the mayor.
I was just gonna see you. I was gonna ask you a question.
I'm not just seeing you. I'm actually.
You want your copy? Can you get it back for me tomorrow? Those are your original?
Yes.
Can he get it from you tomorrow?
Yeah, we can. I can get you a copy.
I'm losing.
Okay.
Uh, mayor, uh, and I want to piggyback on what Councilman Johnson said. Um, since it's been a while, can we try to expedite this before vote tomorrow, um?
I had to see what it is, 'cause I had.
If you look at it and see that he has everything in place and.
I get the police department in.
Yeah.
Right.
It's been a minute.
Uh, uh, check with Captain King.
Captain King, back in the box, right, wasn't he?
Yeah, because of the back of the day when they were inspecting the council. They know who did the inspection.
Gotcha.
So you're saying Captain Fox is upon his.
Well, Captain King, possibly, because he was back in the day when he's out. I think this one's been there. Captain King, where he needed to go to get inspection.
You didn't know about that, did you?
Yeah, I'm just saying, Captain King, maybe, uh, he can tell where we need to go.
I'm not asking about Captain King, am I saying?
I always know, yeah. So I said, Captain King.
Well, I guess we can do tomorrow, whether whoever moves forward to vote. Depending, depending, everything is moved forward. I would say if it doesn't move forward, there's gonna be no voting.
Right. I understand. I have to have, uh, have to have your blessing in order to move forward. Okay.
Thank you for the audience.
Thank you. Thank you.
I keep a copy for tomorrow.
Okay.
I think it consists of Mr. Harris and this council, because everything's in order. Your blessing will be given.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
To the mayor's report.
Good evening, council. Hope you can hear me well.
We can hear you.
Spanish right here. Uh, a few things before I have this big screen here for a purpose. I hope, I hope you all can remove yourselves from your seat to come down here, 'cause I want to display something that we're trying to do. Not right now, before y'all do, I got a few other things, but that's what I want to do. Try, uh, the screen is here for a, for a purpose tonight. Uh, a few things I have on agenda. The first five items we have on agenda, um, are several things I would love for committee meetings to take place about. Uh, the first thing is the public building fees. No, we have a public building committee meeting, but that wasn't discussed on that meeting, uh, to make it just flat across the board. For instance, on some evenings, uh, some buildings you have fees at three hundred dollars, which goes, uh, specific time, you know, equal five hundred, on other times, it's six hundred. I think it's gonna be a flat fee across the board regardless of what day of the week it is. So I would love to, we didn't discuss that at all. We discussed the contract. We discussed the contract, and attorney, he's still working on the contract. Uh, we didn't discuss the fees for the buildings. Uh, it's kind of what day of the week it is. It's not consistent. I just think it needs to be consistent regardless of what day of the week it is. Uh, but I'd love for that meeting, go back to public, uh, building committee and council, one time, of course, the chairperson. I just want to make sure that the council had it on the record, I would love to talk about that committee meeting. Uh, the second thing was cemetery fees, I'm not sure what committee.
We got a hand on building.
Councilwoman Tom.
Yes, you said that we didn't discuss the fees. You know, we talked about it. You remember? I got.
I gave you a form, but we never addressed the form I gave you.
No, we didn't. We didn't address the form, but we did say that, uh, there are some things that needs to be done. Uh, we was looking at the fee, you know, in the minutes.
Right, let's continue that conversation. That's why I just wanted to know, I'd love to continue that conversation. Uh, the cemetery fees, I'm not sure what committee that needs to be assigned to.
We'll look back into the finances.
Right, that's.
Will be being, uh, followed next week.
Okay.
Probably next council.
So that's, that's also, the next thing is financial policy seats.
Also, too, can you add to the financial committee a list of all the business licenses, the related business licenses? 'Cause I know, uh, that matter was Jake where it does.
Right.
I ain't got one yet.
Business license.
Councilwoman?
You say you took the, you look.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's on the public building, the cemetery?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, public building.
It's on, it's up on the public building.
Okay.
Excuse me. So they're gonna be public, talking.
Cemetery's up on the.
Okay. So they said I had to meet, I just, things I, they're gonna all love discussing your committees. Um, also, the papers, those, uh, for trash services, I'm not sure what committee, uh, Mr. President, you'd like to sign it to?
Administration.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got it on my list.
Yes, okay. And also the capital equipment for public safety and public works.
That was Councilman.
Right, if you just can have him just to set a time for that.
Yeah.
Those was the first sixteen on my agenda, halfway done.
You did number five, you already?
What five was? Building license, oh, I missed that.
Let's keep our financial.
Okay, we discussed the business licenses and also the building inspection fees.
You had mentioned this before, the consideration of Mr. Friday was retiring a landfill.
Right, we need to discuss that as well, your, your administrative committee.
Add that, add the city judges, the information seats, and the backs.
Right, 'cause it's, uh, with him, he was a part-time employee.
Right.
We have to have an apartment here for the landfill, who has to be there full-time, and we definitely discussed how to move forward with that.
Would it be a split between the counties?
Well, I'm talking to county now, um, we need to talk in the committee on, on what direction we'll go. Right now, I think we may have to have our own full-time person based off what the county needs and the city needs are.
Mr. President, Councilman Golee, did I hear you say city judges is, um, is coming on your committee?
That's correct.
And will you be, uh, talking about, you know, we addressed the fact that, um, the, the term has ended and the fact that we need to reappoint?
Yes, we're reviewing the recommendation on who we think should be in the.
Okay, okay. We have, um, we have feelings about who we would like added to this as well, so let us know when your meeting is.
I will.
I will.
We gotta get, one of them's not here, so, uh, in fact.
Yeah, just let me know when your meeting is.
Yeah, I'd like to know myself.
You're in charge.
Well, I want to be, you know, understand their time constraints.
I think, Mr. President, the reason for that, because there were other attorneys that had expressed an interest in, uh, the selection of the judges. So if, if, if there was no outside interest, then I think we just done a simple thing to reappoint.
Yeah.
Because of other attorneys have expressed a desire to be given consideration, I think the management committee, we can do it, do better to, and just open it up.
Open it up, that's what I will do. We'll, we'll do like we did with the water boy. We'll bring him in, interview him, talk to him, uh, see where they're coming from, and then make a decision from there, recommendations from there. Give everybody a fair chance.
What's that?
So if you do have, if you do want to be a city judge and you are an attorney out there, make sure you get the information. So I can put it in my box here at city hall, and we'll review it in the coming week.
Okay, man.
Okay, uh, thank you on those.
Go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, I know, I have a birthday, father.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, you want him to come?
He got a birthday.
Now, you know he's an attorney, so don't, don't come up here and interrupt me.
As, as a matter of fact, mayor, and this president, whenever he's present, let's have him first. He's a clock.
No, wait, but he's, as he said, he won't be coming unless he's needed.
Okay.
If he shows up, let's get him in first.
Let's get him in first.
That recommendation.
Yeah. So I was asked to.
The clocks are.
If the city wants to increase the license tax on gas, how do we do it? How do you want to do it? Uh, so right now, you'll know probably, there's an ordinance right now. So if gas is distributed in the city limits, it's four cents on every gallon, okay? The city, if it's distributed outside the city limits or within the police jurisdiction, it's two cents. You have to do another ordinance, um, if you want to increase it. Uh, you can also earmark some of it if you want to. Um, I don't know which number you guys want to do, but I'll send you sample ordinances, uh, probably tomorrow to look at. But for instance, if you did from four to nine, so that's a five cent increase, uh, so, you know, five cents out of nine cents is fifty-five percent. So you could say, you know, we earmarked fifty-five percent of this amount towards streets, uh, you know, drainage systems, sewer systems, sidewalks, things of that nature. Um, but, so I was just asked to research that, and I'm here if you have any questions about it.
And I have done, still, we have the same amount of money that we had talked about, that would be earmarked, set aside for the floating of a twenty-five million dollar gun that would fix all of our streets and city cell, in my, my records.
Yes, I mean, the numbers won't change. I think one thing, um, you're gonna give the ordinance tomorrow that you already put on first read tomorrow, in order to be voting on before the money's out. Uh, but no, the numbers won't change.
Ordinance tomorrow, vote for the gasoline tax, hang that.
So again, bring the process with the ordinance, my head's on first read.
Yes, when, whenever.
And the twenty-five million dollar?
Yeah. You can explain that, but on the ordinance, you'll get it tomorrow, and then, you know, you have to put it on first read in the next meeting, you'll vote on it.
What's the concern?
Oh, the, the license tax on the gasoline.
Just the license tax?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
Also, what time can you get it to me, uh, Mr. Jones, because I might.
Time you want it.
I might have to, Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
To get the knowledge, also.
I'm, I'm gonna try really hard to get it to before lunch. Is that fine?
That's fine. Maybe we can put them on the same, if it's just for first, first reading.
I think, I think Attorney was explaining that we just can simply dub it a gas tax, because there's a, an ordinance that is governing the gasoline tax anyway.
That's right.
So that tax, I mean, that ordinance would have to be revisited.
Yeah.
Uh, if we're gonna increase to the five cents. Uh, Mr. Turner, while you're here, I talked to you briefly about, and quote, this is on the, uh, this is on the agenda, about gunshots.
Right.
Gunshots that is, uh, taking over my city, it just, it just, it just turned. Uh, I know Montgomery had addressed their problem, uh, gunshots. And I'm asking the attorney if he would research Montgomery to see what their shots. To see if the city's on the same thing. City, because we got to let these thugs know that they're just not gonna be able to just pull out their guns and just shoot them because if we don't deal with it, then pretty soon we're gonna be experiencing wild, wild west scenario. So, Mr. Turner, if you look at that law, bring it back to us, and there's something that we can do similar. I think that would serve notice to those people violent, that we are, we're serious about them shooting these guns, and we wanted to stop, cease and desist if needed.
Yeah, definitely. We'll get a copy of the ordinance to kind of look at, and see what it says, and, you know, I agree.
And if you can, Councilor, I'd like to talk to you about some things that we're trying to do internally to, to address that issue.
Yes, sir. All right, and?
Remember calling your game before, as I mentioned, Montgomery had a shot spotter? It was like three hundred and ten grand or something like that, I think it was.
Thanks to the Lord.
Is it? But we get a better deal on one, and that's worth while, obviously, 'cause I know all the people who live in downtown, like, get their roofs fixed every time we have a celebration somewhere. What goes up, let's come down, people.
All right, any other questions for attorney? Also, too, I emailed you the contract, uh, for attorney moving this morning. I warned you.
Wait, wait.
Wait, wait, wait.
Y'all want to go to attorney two.
Yeah, I do look alike.
Attorney.
That was big, there, Harris. That's big.
Attorney John, which I did leave you a copy of, uh, it's a contract, so hopefully we can move forward with that. And put them on the sound, John. I'll forward it to you this morning. All right.
I'm hoping I can send you, I'll, actually, I'll send you two ordinance, too, like we talked about, one at five, yeah, two at three scenes. I'll send you that.
We give a pitch, happy, come up, Councilman Tom.
Mayor?
Then the council, the county, who's your?
Uh, attorney, I have something that, uh, I need to give you, that I need you to, uh, into for me calling.
Okay.
From our committee meeting?
From our committee meeting?
Yeah, I think I might know it, yes, sir.
You know, you, do you know?
I think so.
Okay. All right.
Attorney, is the three cents the fallback position on the five cents?
Yes.
I think the street wants that too, is that in order for it to pass before the money's out, to have both ordinance already on consent agenda, you want to go back and revisit it, to draw up the process, that's, that's recent, but two.
All right, and of course, thank you, thank you, Attorney.
You're great. All right, um, I met with Councilman Johnson, um, a week ago, Councilman Johnson, um, along with Pastor Golds, uh, who's partnering with, um, a group that's called United for the City of Partnerships, throughout the pastures, and it's an area that Councilman Johnson, Lord, uh, that partnered the city loans, and inside your package, you will see the, um, the vision, the mission of United for the City, uh, Partnership. And I have a couple of, uh, of the pastors here tonight, in case the council has some questions about them, but their accent of the city is to partner with us with the donation of some land, uh, or contracting, uh, I remember understanding with some land in the building, to build a youth, um, spot for us in Ward Eight, that will include basketball and also include, um, the structure there that will utilize for other services and programs for, uh, the youth that's out of Southern, particularly in Ward Eight. And, um, there's something I believe, I believe Councilman Johnson's wholeheartedly supports, um, I support it and I think it's a great, uh, effort for the city to partner with them, this land that we're not using, but we own it, they're committed to cleaning the land up, to, um, to improve upon the land and all the things they're looking for, but some kind of partnership with the city, the city can utilize our land space, uh, to make that happen.
I saw a picture coming from you.
We can get to you all tomorrow if you need tomorrow.
Okay.
Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, uh, thank you, man, thanks, President.
Do y'all have any courses in there, or?
I'd like to just go on, come up, if you don't mind, to be real quick, uh.
There, Mike going.
Oh, I can see. Right. Yes, it's, right, right, this is a property, and also, I bet you the process gets more proper than also that I'm trying to add on to it, uh, and I think, uh, Minister, uh, Gordon, come to me, uh, whipped it out, I mentioned to him that we had this, this land and, uh, when doing anything with it, and him and his partners came to me and, and said, hey, we can be able to get this and, and demolition, we need to demolish it and do something for the kids in that, in that area, and I said, man, great, let me give it to the mayor, I don't want anything without him knowing. So I appreciate you, Mike, uh, not, Mike, Mr. Gordon, real good, if you want to speak a little bit, I appreciate you can, and give me a vision.
Before he does, can't, sorry, I have a point to reference, put, put it following time.
Okay, if we go down to Ward Eight, uh, before we get to the peak deck, I think you can make a left, that's the peak deck here, that's the traffic light, go down, make a left, right, make a left, or you make a left before we get to the peak deck here on the Vision Street, and going down toward Railroad, all that property back, and behind my shop that I have down there on, uh, and all that property.
Right, not the ward.
The day deck?
Yeah, but you gotta come back, come back a little bit, it's just behind the, yeah, it's behind there, though, but my fact, I've got power company that's in the process of doing a, uh, doing some work there, behind that area, we have no power company putting a new plank, it's behind there, so, uh, there's a lot of work to be done, they delegated, they got a group that they hopes to, to revitalize this area and, and let the mayor look at it and I'm, I'm hopeful.
Thank you.
You want to stay on red?
Good evening, uh, first thing, let me show you so, Mike's mother. I know. There's something between us. I, I'd like to thank y'all for the consideration, I'd like to thank, uh, our ward leader and the mayor. The area that he's talking about, one of the things, you know, we're going through a time here in Southern, and I hear a lot of people, what we gonna do, what we gonna do? I don't have the answer, but I know God do, and one of the things I feel personally, along with the United for Southern organization that I'm a part of also, if we can come together and reach these kids before the gang reach these kids, they need something, they need something, if we can get this, uh, we're gonna clean it up, we're going to vitalize the area and give the kids an alternative. And in the same time, we're giving the kids an alternative, we're going to pour God into them, and if we get God into these kids at a young age, scripture tells us they will not depart. So if they can spread the word as to the spreading bullets, as I've heard tonight, I think Southern is going to prosper from it, and I think all of us can agree that God will be satisfied with our decisions, because you see on there that we are out there working for God, you see the organization things we have planned, coming up, and, you know, it speaks for us, uh, but we just want to come to you and, and ask you to, you know, look favorable for the decision.
Mr. President, is there anything possible out here, the mayor can get it together with this consent agenda, we will move forward with this?
Hello, Councilman, tell us, and Councilman.
Uh, Reverend Gordon, I applaud you, what you was trying to do. I have, I must say this, because, um, for two years I have been sitting here, that in my ward, that I have bought property, I feel the same way like you do, I have the same problem besides, just like Ward Eight, I have a lot of young kids, young, young men. I live in a community where a lot of gun violence, we hear gun forty to fifty rounds for the past two weeks, I have been working on a project just like you're trying to do with some of the ministers in my ward, we bought property, for the last two years, we have been trying to get planted and developed, to work with a grant, I brought it before the mayor. I feel a little, 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 a little, I, I love what you're doing, but I feel a little, little hurt, because this is what I have been trying to do for two years, where I live at, in Ward Seven, where my children like to play basketball, where my kids like to have a playground area, and I haven't gotten in, I haven't gotten this far. I have seven or eight ministers, we've been working, trying to strive for over in our community to save our kids, and I, I applaud you for yours moving fast and mine have not came up off the ground. So thank you for what you're doing, and I'm, I won't give up for, for my area, for my kids, because they have nowhere to play, they have, I have one basketball court, and the, the young people have taken it over. I came through there yesterday, the babies was outside the fence, and I, I focus on this very hard, just like you do, we have to save our young kids from becoming to be drug dealers and picking up guns, so I'm gonna continue to strive and hopefully that the, the ministers that in my ward are working hard, we're, we're working hard trying to bring something to.
The organization is called United for Southern. And I'm also a part of another organization, and, um, I see some of the other members here, we are reaching out not just for this one district, my church is in this district, and we are working in this district, I'm the pastor of Ward Avenue Baptist Church. But we work all over Southern, we plant during the summer, we have sites all over Southern, we're not just looking at one place, we're United for Southern, and any organization that needs us, we are open to try to partner with, train, you know, you see what we are doing right there. We're here for the people, we're not just here just for, but this opportunity is here and we pray over it, and we just come to you, and I understand the frustration, I, I do, I understand frustration, so, that's all I can say, I understand frustration, but we are United for Southern, not united for this part or that part, we are United for Southern.
Councilman, the Councilman.
Reverend Gordon, I truly, I truly support this initiative, it is needed then and now. I'm almost conflicted to you on this question, but as a elected official of the city, I must be a good steward of the people's property, but this is the people's property. And the question I want to pose to you, would there be a problem in the deed that once this function ceased and desist, that the property reversed back to the city?
It was for a versionary clause.
Right?
Yes.
But the intent was never to give the property, they're gonna utilize it, the property.
Right. And all this mess gonna be on them.
You asking my question, and I'm on board.
I'm more than a property that we deal with, doesn't reverse the clause.
Well, let me say this.
Hard to see.
The, the reversionary clause was part of my question as well, um, we just want to make, make sure that what is the intent continues to be the intent, like, we have two schools closing now, so it's no longer gonna be an educational facility, so it reverses back to us, uh, we only wanted that property for education purposes. So we only wanted for the purpose that you're describing in this document right here.
Yes.
So I, that was my concern too as well, I also wanted to ask, is there anything monetary, I'm looking at page twelve, and I'm just looking at your cost breakdown, is there anything monetary that you're asking from the City of Southern government? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That's not, that's not, that's something that's a.
Okay, so, so the mayor's office has all of this stapled together. Yeah, so all documents are stapled together, I don't know where yours begins and ends now.
It's just two pages, it's just two pages.
So there's nothing monetary that you need from us, you just need our support?
Just need our support, and we going.
And our support, that is monetary, okay, and then finally, um, this is a ministers group, uh, or a citizen total?
Ministers and citizens together, uh, you see some of the organizations that have already come together, like I said, we have a basketball camp leader that go out and we do this, you know.
I was just asking, because I, I want to ask you, how do other ministers tap into it, because my pastor's here, my pastor's never invited to stuff, and I told, uh, uh, Reverend, Reverend Trump, uh, from Brown Chapel, the same thing, when I met with him, uh, my pastor's never invited to stuff, so I would like him to be invited, because he has a passion, uh, for the people, just like you do, and I love your presentation on what you're saying you're gonna do, I, I did hear politics one time in your presentation, and I thank you for that, uh, you, you were just telling us how you can help make Southern better. And I would like it when citizens come to tell us that, and, and all you need is the property to get it done, so, um, thank you for that, um, and, and just wanted to know, and so you can go ahead and say it for the recording, and for those who are in the audience, how, uh, other ministers can tap into, give her?
Uh, I could give out my number, uh, my number's also on the paper there.
Okay.
I know your pastor well, so we can meet together, and I will make sure I get in touch with him.
Okay.
I think we still meet the second Monday of the month, I will get in touch with him, because there are other organizations also.
Yeah.
There's another organization we're part of, and that's our goal to unite Southern, because it's too big for any of us.
Absolutely.
If God don't do it, it's not gonna do it.
It's bigger than ours.
And it's time out for praying, prayer is always in order.
Sure.
Prayer is always in order, but if when you get up off your knees.
Move your feet. When you pray, move your feet.
You know, the old folk used to say, God ain't gonna do it when you can do it for yourself. And it has to be with inside of its will, so that's all we want to do, we want to move forward as a united group and make Southern better, given our, uh, one of the things you can see on there, uh, we did a concert last year, rap concert, these kids are not, hey, I love ACHR, but these kids like rap. When we as ministers and pastors come together and control the situation.
Right.
These kids can have fun, serving God is fun, it's not boring.
You got gospel rap?
Hey, gospel rock, serving God is not boring, and we have to move beyond just sitting in the church.
Yes, sir.
And we have to get out of, don't say, meet me where I am, and only place I can find you is in the church, that's no good anymore, we have to do something else.
All right, and the doors of the church are? Well, Council, two things, uh, first of all, I'd like to, um, you know, someone, you can ask the young man to stand up and, and be part of the organization.
And gentlemen, Brian, I'm, uh, one of the youth pastors associated with United, this is Mrs. Catherine, um, Harding, and she's also a part of us.
Those things are just, we are a large group, right?
And the other thing I want to say, um, Mr. President, uh, this has been going on for maybe less than a year, uh, I, I had, um, Mrs. Lola Sue in our code, uh, enforcement was going around Ward Eight, and found all the, uh, uh, areas that was abandoned, overgrown, and she was getting these owners' levels and everything, this property came to our ownership, I think maybe a month ago, two months ago, uh, after, just before I tried to honor her, I left, and he told me, and I won't call him a name, but he gave the property to the city, so they likely got money into it, it just, this was donated from him to us, and I would think, Lord, that, uh, they came along at the right time in order to help us to rehabilitate this property and to move forward. We also have a trailer park over there, uh, which kids don't have nothing to do, uh, I want to thank the church, they feed the kids over there, they give kids something to do, but they don't have nowhere to play yet, so that's the goal, to work with the children in the trailer park, to get them something to do, because on the park we do have this one, this is a long walk just from side to side, but I thank them, anything that I do to work with our, we are making, Council, we can make this happen for them.
We're putting on the sound.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, President, the Council members, the next item on the agenda, it's a CBPG money we talked about, um, two weeks ago, about this, um, stone drain and sewage project, um, I gave you the document, it's just a resolution I have for you, all the contracts inside of there for thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for the money that we've already received, it's not, it's not new money, um, just a process we're going to go through, and, uh, however, I'm telling you, you work with us with these, um, grant projects, and it's just administration fee, I want, um, you all to be aware of that, and we're putting the resolution form, um, for the purpose of the council, um, to, to support that effort.
You don't put it in there too long?
Yes.
Resolution form?
Right, it's, I, I have a written copy.
Okay, can you email it?
I get it, well, can you email it to me?
We can email it to you.
We just put that on the sound.
Okay. All right, um, my financial reports, they can email to you the date, um, if, if you have problems, you email, please let us know, with the budget performance, payment register, sex, sales tax information, bank names and balances, and copy of restitution and purchase order reports included in that, um, in that report, just email this absolutely to you, so if you need to get it, please let us know, um, try to get to you before the first council meeting of the month, so, we email it to you.
I have it.
Okay, um, having said that, if I can, you know, with Grace down here, have some stuff I want to show to you, um, then I'll finish my report up with something else, I'm going to talk with the council, what y'all got about.
Um, here, while they're sitting, enough for you, you have, you there with the purchase order report, um, the first, if we got, um, you know, there was a freeze at one point, you go home and purchase order, can, can I send the one that I have down, you know, it's, okay, sit down there.
Sure, I didn't know you were holding one, well, we got the first orders of the ones that we have in the system, so I'm not sure if they already have it in the system or not.
It may be in the system, I'm not sure if Miss Sykes was here.
If it's not, if it's not in the system, uh, contact Miss, Miss, Paige, Miss Peggy, it's, yeah, we just go from there.
It may be in the system, I'm not sure.
But please do.
I gotta go in and find it somewhere.
Okay.
Also too, I have a question for you, that's more a personnel, personnel question, uh, I proved the handle, do we pay a laid-off employee a check for back work, it's back time, back time, man?
Say again?
Can we pay a laid-off employee?
For back time pay?
Yeah.
I got two, I got, I got some.
Yeah, I'm asking.
Yeah, you asked me.
Is it part of the personnel name?
Uh, he said, yes, it is, I'll write it myself, uh, we said, yes, it is, but if we owe, if we owe someone, we have to pay them, uh, that's just the part, part of the labor, if someone is working, we have to pay them for hours they work if they take the short for some reason, right? And I got the council camera down, I feel like I haven't, haven't told a class in a while, um, you drawing the back? You gotta turn this way, we got this way, because we want the people to, to be able to see what we're, what we're sharing with the council, that's where, if you, if you, I mean, Council, so make sure everybody can see it. Councilman Benjamin, I'm, uh, I'm gonna ask you, I can't, you said, bring all my stuff, works, so let's find a report.
Oh, and I thank you very much. This is the appropriate place. This is the appropriate place.
So council, while, while we're having this, um, technical issue out here, trying to get the screen to behave, act right, um, Council Youngblood brought to, uh, my attention over a year ago, um, the idea on how we can assist in tourism inside the city of Selma. Um, I think it was a brilliant idea that she had and she's been working diligently over a year to, to get this off the ground. And the project she came up with was, it's, it's called, I Trace The Journey. And that's part of Selma's, um, civil rights story, vote rights story, where we, um, partner with Lowns County, partner with Montgomery. I'm not sure if we looking at other cities as well, like Maryland.
Right now, she's, I'm there with Mayor Strahan and with Mary Davis.
Right, so she's done a lot of groundwork, a lot of footwork, uh, to get this off the ground. Um, it's projected to have the first I Trace The Journey tour, March the first, first, um, day of the Jubilee event here, um, in Selma. Um, what we're looking to get passengers, which they will have to pay a fee to travel from Selma to Lowns, where we stop in Lowns, and then go to Montgomery, and we will patronize some of the businesses, um, in those areas, Selma in those areas as well, to try to make sure all cities are benefiting from this, this effort. Um, it is a resolution that will be given to you all this evening, um, hopefully that the council will support those, those efforts to do that. Uh, right now, she's taken it upon herself to, to lead the charge to make sure that the business is ready to move forth on March the fir-, first. But I want to make sure that, um, we brought that before you all, and I thank, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood, if you want to speak more about it, please feel free to add to.
Well, the council knows because anyway, it has one resolution, so we can do, um, Captain Johnson has the van, uh, that's the project.
I have that, it's right.
Yeah, we're doing the van, so that we can do that, um, but, um, we're, we want to be slacing of, um, a charter then.
Charter, right.
Um, for the March first, Councilwoman DeJonge and Councilwoman Thomas are wanting to try and put a thing.
I don't know what was going on on TV.
Well, it's not on TV, this is, this is some stuff, some other stuff, this TV been on all day.
This is just, okay, okay.
Um, but anyway, that, but, so the council, the council is aware of it. And when, when people finish the journey, right, you know, of course, they'll start here. And it's just the very basic, and the first one, they of course, very basic, we're beginning at, um, they will tour the interpretive center, walk over the bridge, they will embark on the, um, journey bus, then go to Lowns County and it will be narrated by a foot soldier. And then they'll go to Lowns County Interpretive Center to tour that, then have lunch in Lowns County, and I will discuss with the folks there, um, and the places that they have lunch. And then, of course, go to the Battle of the Lusso Memorial, and then go to Montgomery and ride up Dexter Avenue and, you know, have the narrated tour. And then they have a, like a, sort of like a round table discussion coming back home and ask questions and things like that. But that, when tour buses come into Selma, they are coming into Selma, going out of Selma. This is, uh, a tour that originates in Selma and comes back to Selma. And as we see more things, like as we said, the hotel open and other businesses open, uh, that we will have more people here to spend money and stay, we're expecting that, we're expecting more of them.
And I, and I, and I think this is one of the brightest ideas that we have, is come to what the city can do with tourism when it comes to, uh, capitalize off the history that we have, um, in Selma, which I think encourages every citizen to make sure that they trace the journey as well. You know, we live in Selma, we're in a still on and staying a precedent for history of, of, of our city.
Excuse me, Mrs. was surprised too, when, before we, before we do a tour, I'm hoping that we'll be able, whether it's paid or not, before then, to take the council on a little practice run, dress rehearsal. So we can, we can go, um, but the, the participants will get like what the, the, one of these things, the, the, one of these old.
Trail?
Yeah, the National Historic Trail ornament. And then we'll have a certificate with the, um, saying, I'll refresh the journey sign off with the soldier. So, uh, they, we've already got a lot of interest in fact, I just got back from the downtown conference and I had more people that can fit on that bus and say they want to, so, um, we're excited about it.
So, resolution, I have a resolution for you, you and I, I guess you had to send the original copy of that. President, go and get the res- original copy of the resolution.
Okay, but that's the only one I have.
Okay, so we need to put it on.
Okay, I expect it.
Okay, okay. Don't y'all see this, I'm, I'm good at this.
Can y'all back and see this, the lights need to go out with this.
Yes, that's right, okay. So, so council, I, I believe, um, that in order for us to shape our future, we have to be a part of the broadband conversation, the digital vibe, uh, we have to become a smart city. And in the lesson of our Smart City Initiative, there are several things I want to share with you this evening so you can be aware of what we're trying to do moving forward to, to bring our city into the future. Uh, one thing that we're doing that you would see downtown, if you haven't already recognized downtown, we have wifi service, we actually have one gig city right now, people just don't have access to that, that wifi. We'll be launching that, deploying that within the next week or so. But, um, right now, downtown Selma, uh, we're competing with the cities that's Montgomery, Birmingham, just includes the larger cities, which are one gigabyte cities right here in historic Selma. We have those capabilities right now, um, due to the leadership we have in the IT department and other partnerships that we have, um, throughout this region that are partnering with us to make this reality downtown historic Selma. Um, so from the, um, James, Mayor James Perkins Park, all the way down to Dallas Avenue, um, we would have wifi and then the side streets as well, Water, Selma, Alabama, um, all those streets will include those wifi services. And so what would happen when someone tried to log on to the city wifi page, this is our splash page that would come up. What you would notice on here, we have information about the city of Selma on this splash page. We are still working on to change some things, add things to it. So when tourists come to our city, if they automatically log into our, our wifi, it takes them to everything that's going on inside the city. So they don't have to have a personal guide, they can have things available for them right at the disposal of their phones. I would say iPhones, I'm an Apple man, they Android, the iOS system, they will have access to that right from our splash page, page. Um, what I love about it is that we can even tie it in with some of our, our local nonprofits. If they want to promote things that they have going on, that we can do it through our city web page as well. So it's a single source where people can come to and find out what's everything that's happening inside the city of Selma. Uh, we believe it goes back to, to having some kind of synchronized system in place where people can start to go from this event to that event, from this site to that site, um, and this is what we're doing with, with our, our wifi. So if there's splash pages that come up, they'll be able to sign in, and here's the beauty thing about it, uh, we'll be able to capture, uh, who signs in and who visits Selma. The question is always asked, how many tourists do we have coming to Selma? How many people was in Selma this week, well, if they tie into our wifi, we have a record now of how many people have actually visited us per day on the hour, we can be able to track all that instantly, which, um, I think is a great thing for our city and just want to make sure that you are aware of, but we will be deploying this wifi services downtown Selma, uh, within a week or so. Um, it will be high speed and that, and, um, I just think it's great for Selma, it's good news for Selma when we start talking about shaping our future. Uh, and broadband technology is the future, we missed our I sixty-five, I eighty-five, um, but we cannot afford to miss our broadband infrastructure. And I'm grateful for the past leadership, um, um, leadership, um, leadership, uh, with Mayor Evans to put the dark fiber in the ground. Well, we are building upon it now, and I think that's what each, each, each mayor should do, not to reinvent the wheel, but to make things better than they were before. And so we're building on the infrastructure that he placed in, I think it was two thousand nine, two thousand ten, with the bond that was passed. And we are actually trying to make this a move where we can see how we are utilizing the infrastructure that we have. Many cities would die to have what we have inside our grounds, they don't have it, they have to rent from your Googles, your AT&amp;Ts, um, uh, colleges and so forth, we own our own, uh, which means we can turn, we determine our own destiny, no one else is determining our destiny for us. But this is something we're doing downtown Selma. Now, to add to that, um, downtown Selma, um, what we're doing with the wifi, this, what I want to show to you with the open source data that we're doing also inside the city of Selma. You know, last week, uh, two weeks ago, I came to you all talking about the open checkbook. Well, I got with the IT department, our, and our team, and we started discussing things on what we can, can you go back to the first page first? You're already jumping to it, Carrie, you get it. We started discussing more transparency, you know, we keep hearing people saying you're not transparent in the city hall. Well, we got a solution to it, technology allows us to address that concern. Anything citizens want to put their hands to, their fingertips to, they can do it from the comfort of their own home. No one has to visit Ms. Ivy's office and say, why, I need more, uh, information from the city. They can do it from their smartphones, or they can do it from their laptops, or from their iPads at home. And so what you see here is a display of what we're working on, now this page is not up right now, cause we're still working on it. But if you can scroll down this current, you can see the different things that we can do, uh, on this page. Uh, we can talk, we can share stuff about the fire department, the budget, um, Selma Police Department, open checkbook on, on bills I've been paying, revenues that are coming in, uh, public works, we can time, when people say I got a pothole in my ear. Well, okay, well, if a, a work request has been placed in, you actually can monitor how long it take us to fix that. So councilwoman had to say, well, Mayor, how long is it gonna take for us to get to it? Well, you can monitor cause the public works, uh, department is updating as they go along. So we got a hundred projects out there, and you see, well, they only have thirty-five projects completed, well, you know they're, they're in the process of getting to that project. Uh, citizen can do the same thing, instead of having to call the council, they just go online and say, well, let me see what this is when it comes to this pothole issue. The beautiful thing about it is however, instead of the council have to put work session, work orders in, work requests in, citizen can do it from their own phones, or do it from their own, um, their own computers, they can go and you can see what citizen did that. And so we can send emails out to those citizens to let them know we receive, we are receiving your, your concern, um, or your request, and we will get updates periodically through emails to those citizens. And once the job is finally done, they will have that message saying we've completed the job, all because of technology, uh, that will afford us to do this. Now, um, as you see, there's different items on here that you can click on, we're still working on, they're on the right side, change icons, we're still trying to find more themes to pull up there, so if the council have an idea as well, we can include that you would like to see out there, please let us know, but what I want to do is show you example of what we can do with this type of technology. If you clicked on Selma Police Department for Miss Curtis, hopefully it's like IP address up there, did something go wrong right there?
Yeah, I think we got off the, we don't have a wide.
Disconnected.
No, we don't want it, it won't, it won't connect to the website or the website.
Oh. Any questions about that, why she doing here?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What you just said, you know, a lot of people, a lot of elderly, you know, a lot of people that they don't have, they don't use the technology like we do.
Right.
When you say about the work orders, you know, you have the elders.
Is that a certain age you're talking about? Is that a certain age you say elder?
You have, you know, most of the.
My grandmother would might be offended, you say she don't, she know you're taking out the elderly.
You really do have a lot of.
I'll get you right, I'm going, I just, yeah, right. But, but you, as a councilperson, you can do, you just put it in, say, you say, well, we sent something to you, Mayor, and I say, well, I can never get it. But if you go online, the system can track it for you, you can say, well, no, look online, it went into the system, we can see what day it was put in, who put it in, uh, and what response came back to it, because you would get a real time on who received that work order. So you'll know the person in the city who actually got it, so you say, Mayor, they didn't do it, now we got somebody saying we were not doing the job. So it's more accountability.
Well, I, I, I know what you're saying, it's, it's newer to you, it's, it's new model to the, the new of us.
Right.
When you have the old, older people.
Right.
You know, some of them have cell phones, some of them don't have computers, so we just continue to.
No, what you would do as a councilperson, you just put in the system yourself for them, right, that's how that work. Yes, sir.
On the previous page, uh, a lot of the events and duplications, and we have advertising down there for Walt's Theater, I didn't think we were allowed to advertise on our page, or, or our page channel, said, are we allowed to advertise on our page channel on our page?
That's city, the city, the Walt's Theater is the city building, um.
Well, the Mary Poppins was not a city event, I'm just curious.
Well, that page is not open running, the session is, they're running that page, but it's not.
I mean, Old Depot is a city building.
Old Depot is on there, right, that's what I'm saying, everybody downtown is on there, so when people come here.
Now, just the question I asked from all the citizens was, they saw the page channel advertising for the movie theater.
But that was previous, that's been up since the fight got here, so I'm not, I'm not sure, we'll look at the contract and we'll look through, um, and see what we can and can't do with that.
I was wondering if it's an old, old situation they reference in our new situation.
Right, so we've been, it was up since day one. Yes, ma'am.
You know, I, um, a citizen asking something about the page channel. The citizens in Selma, they pay like, what, twenty-five cent, um, toward the, this. On the cable video, someone called me and asked me, and they was asking me, um, you know, knowing when you have a page channel on, on television, the page channel, um, only shows, uh, it doesn't show everything like if a council has a, uh, you know, we have a committee meeting.
Correct.
Or we're having other events.
Correct.
And they was asking me that when we have meetings and stuff like this, or it gets going on, that they are paying the twenty-five cent on the cable, they said they would like to see more of the council's, uh.
And I agree with them, Miss Curtis. Miss Curtis have. Miss Curtis have shared it, shared it with, with the council, I'm not sure if you have it or not, but that's a submission form that the council just filled out and give it to the IT department, they will by all means upload that on the page. I mean, it's not that it can't be done, it's just the manager's giving us the information. Yes, sir.
Can we get that form emailed out by all the councils?
Yes, we can get it out, we can get it emailed out to you, yeah, we want more content.
But you know, this thing, she brought it up and, and I said that I did not know I was gonna ask you about it because she said that she felt that, um, the twenty-five dollars, I mean, the twenty-five cent that they're getting on their cable bill for the page channel, and when they see, uh, one eighty for.
One eighty-one, I think.
One eighty-one, it only have stuff like, uh, like if you're talking about something, uh, but it had one thing on there, she said that Mike Johnson had, uh, his, his recreation, uh, uh, and she said that, that she wanted to see more of the council of the events that they had.
Councilwoman, what I'm saying, I agree with you, we get the form to you, you submit the information by all means, we want more content to put up on that city page, I mean, the city. We want more content to put up on that city page, I mean, the city, uh.
Uh, the reason council members, uh, the reason that council members may not be familiar with the form is that because Ms. Snipes was here and she used the form for us. So like if you turn in a war meeting, uh, or anything that's going in your war, when we turned it, turned it into her, she immediately would do the form for us. So we never saw the form, uh, but it went now whether Miss Curtis got it or put it on the page channel is up to Miss Curtis. Now, I don't know if your sub made it there, that's on her.
There's nothing, the current, trust me, but the current, Miss Curtis wanted to address that.
But, um, that's why, that's why we don't see the form because it was, uh, always intercepted by the administer since she would do it for us.
No, they were just talking about the twenty-five cent that was paying for their cable bill here of nature.
Yeah.
And they said they would like to see more, uh, from the council, whatever they are doing, you know, like.
Yeah, so that means we got to submit more. If they want to see more, we have to submit more.
That's what I was going to say, if, if, if the information is sent to me, uh, when Tamika was here, she always makes sure I got them. Sometime I would get information off the table downstairs, and I put it on the page channel. Anything that the city is involved in, a private citizen's event, or someone's church event that does not involve the city cannot be put on the page channel. But if I get the information, I don't have a problem putting it out there with pictures or whatever you have to go with it. It just needs to be in a format that I can use.
So we got, we need to take some more stuff.
I mean, I know.
No, some of the minutes, uh, what the mayor has started doing is like the financial reports now, they're going to be up on our website. That's too much data to put out on the page channel because it's like watching a TV channel. Oh, yes, and this, um, any recommendation that we give to the council is, um, it's okay. Uh, that's what the mayor was saying, the council recommends they go out there, and then they will look at putting notes out there also.
Do you submit on the website that?
I don't have them, so I can't.
Miss Curtis, if you can, you can, you can, let me get back to.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
With the open book, no, no, with the open book. Because some of the questions that you're trying to address right now, the open checkbook will have every single penny that comes into the city, every cent of the penny that goes out, the mayor's travel, the council travel, anything, the street area, all that would be up on this open source, this open data book that we have. Uh, so as I was saying earlier, if you click onto Public Safety, this is as, these are not Selma numbers. We're still building our numbers. This is just a, um, a demonstration of what we can do with this technology. These are national numbers. Right here is crime statistics. Miss Curtis, if you would go and click on one of those, uh, bars down there, so if you want to dig deep into seeing what's going on, uh, these are in ten minutes increments, if you will, um. But scroll down, first of all, you can see everything, the bottom way it shows me pulled up the, the burglar, we on the burglar right now. It shows, go back up. As you can see right here, total crimes in America on this, during this time was one million burglars, one million, uh, over one million burglars. What you see over here, the red status, yeah, false and true. The true, we can think about some more language to use for that, but the true is saying those who was arrested and still, and stayed at the, at the jail site. The other ones were released, that same thing. Um, if you go further down, oh, you clicked on the women's side of it, Miss Curtis. Right, she clicked, so the truth, so it was two hundred and thirty-some thousand out of the one million that's actually stayed at jail.
And it's valid.
It's relevant, it's relevant, it's relevant numbers. We're going to do it on still. What you see right here are the world cloud top crime stats. The largest, the larger, the, um, the word is determines on, um, how, what the amount of the crime. So if, if, if the word is big, that mean you have a whole lot of issue with narcotics. Um, if the smaller it is, the less crime violence you have in those areas. Yes, they're smaller. So narcotics, as you can see, was the main focus, battery was big. This is the type of stuff we're trying to do with the crime data here itself. So when citizens want to know what's going on inside of Selma, you don't have to contact the police department. You can run online and you can see this yourself. And you see it breaking down here on the right, crime categories, narcotics, battery, give you another graph, um, a chart form that show you how this is, is operated. If you scroll down farther, Miss Curtis, other graphs are showing you going to break it down, uh, per ward. On your ward, what's been going on in your ward? You're going to go right to the city open data page and click on it and dig down the side of it to see what's going on in your particular ward. Just another form, graphic, if you want to need to measure that way to show you. And this is within ten minutes time frames, as you will again. And this is kind of stuff we're trying to talk about, open information to the public. If they, you know, people want to see what's going on, they have a, a avenue to go and find it out. Um, go down some more, Miss Curtis, if you can. Go up, go up. I want to click down the side of the, um, go up. Go up, go, go, go. Can you click inside this again? Inside, no, 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 go up. Right here, click inside of here.
It changed the box.
Oh, did it?
It's already up there, it's, it's, it's real time.
Yeah, so it's, it's real time numbers though. So the more you click on, the further you can go inside to see what's going on. But this is just for the po- po- police department. You may do it in any department you want to do it to the city. For instance, you want to look in public works department, you'll be able to look at salaries if you want to see it. You'll be able to look at, um, what we spent on capital equipment. It go further down, what we spent on a particular item inside the city of Selma. And that's the type of technology we're trying to use to be more transparent, have an open government for citizens inside the city of Selma. Yes, ma'am.
So, right, when you doing this like this, are we going city managed, why, because of you showing up? When, by you putting this, all this information out, like so people can go to the sites, to the websites, when you say you're going to have, where, when you're just like, uh, open checkbook.
Yes, ma'am, everything.
You write a check or something like this, something like this. Are you, is this the plan that, uh, where we will not, where you be going like city managed, that, that once somebody will be controlling to see all of it?
No, all this comes from each department, the Ivy, each department, New World System, which we have. Once they put information in New World System, it immediately goes to this site. I mean, it's real time. So as soon as someone puts something in New World, it pops up on the site.
You saying this is all predicated on?
This is council, we, we can't take that, and I'm not taking questions for knowledge on the council. Go ahead.
So that, that's why I asked you that question because you, you know, you know, like, we, we are seeing this now.
Right.
And there are going to be other questions asked with you go, if you say we're going to go going into a new way, or we can go to the site and see. Because once we start, we start seeing this, you know, the other citizens, like, they haven't seen it yet, but when you start putting it out on the site, where we can go online, go to your computer to look up.
Right.
And then, you know, they might have a question to ask. You don't, you don't understand what I'm saying.
They might have a question to ask about what?
I, I'm just, I'm asking you, just like the police department, you just use that.
Right.
I just watched you on the screen, when you said, what, uh, the, the rate, uh, like you said, uh, we have a number of phone calls calling out in areas in different wars that you were saying.
Right.
That they will be able to go, uh, if they want to go on the computer site to, to follow up, how many, how many, uh, areas been shot up in that area maybe? And also you will have on there with it, like, uh, you know how you got to be out soon? A lot of, you know, people been getting shot and stuff like that. So that, that's the way that you're going to set it up now, so when we'll be able to go in there and look at them.
Now, you want me to look at the victims now, but you.
Not the victims, I said.
You better look at, there was shots, there was gunshots in this area.
No survives.
Right, you will, you will have that information right at your fingertips. I'm like, so everybody who wants information, have access to the information. This is, government's open for the people. And so that's what we're trying to do to make sure people have all the information. Yes, sir.
So it'd be kind of very similar to what we used to get, more reports from the police department as far as number of calls to a certain area.
But be more in depth.
It'd be more depth, of course, it have a code that would reference certain types of caller calls which where you get the words and decides the words are based on the frequency of those things being called in.
Right.
But it is predicated, again, on the human being actually typing that in to get that data actually into the machine so it actually utilizes by the public.
Well, to a certain extent, uh.
Do what was already being, so it's automatically kind of being updated as it goes, based on the way the, the stat works.
Well, like I said, with public works, if, if a citizen go in and puts something in, it goes in automatically. But the police stuff, we're, we're updating daily. Right, because you're going to be on the spot. A gunshot goes off right now, it's not going to show up in that, right, yeah. Yes, Councilwoman, this, again, this is just, we're still working on this, this.
I know, but it, I just want to ask you because I'm, 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 I'm taking in what you said. So this would, by you doing this like this, have to see yourself with the, with the problem, somebody made a problem with this. And after you see where, they can go in and see where so many gun shots are fired in that area, in your ward. So when you get that report like that, are you going to be focusing on that area that you take care in that ward, that area that you have on?
Well, what we just, me focusing on, it'd be mayor and council focusing on it. So you can see when we're asking for resources, the need for these resources. So you actually see the real numbers. When we say gun violence up in this area, we need more officers, we need more equipment, then it gives more justification. So you see it, and citizens see it as well. So I thank you all for all this, officer.
Yeah, but that's.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just, will there be a place on there for the citizens to be able to email questions regarding the data that they're seeing to a particular body?
Yeah, we haven't gone there for it yet. But I'm like, if it's something, I think you're talking about most personnel now, and these different departments, because we need someone there to answer these questions, we definitely need more personnel.
Well, as I was going to say, this is a rollover thing, where you got time to answer questions. Certain, you know, depending that it'll take twenty-four, forty-eight hours, you get a response back on questions regarding the data, some person inputted the data, it'd be the point person receives that email.
Right. I think it'd be, I think, you know, it's doable, but I thought you were saying like somebody actually like a live chat.
No, 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 this is, this is, uh, this is understanding the email sent to be an email responded to.
Correct, correct.
Within a twenty-four, forty-eight hour window.
Just like the public works would be the same way. They always keep them posted on progress of, of their, uh, work requests that are going out. Right, yes, sir. Uh, this is something new that I, I know, but in the meanwhile, uh, we will still be able to work with the old work, uh, requests. We're transitioning to this, right, so yes, we're transitioning. Right, we're transitioning to it, uh, but we're moving swiftly. We're moving swiftly, uh, to, to do that because, you know, you hear complaints, you hear misinformation so much. And so when, when people make misstatements or give false information out, the whole city will be able to go there and see themselves what the facts are, yes.
And has administrative assistant, uh, who just go to the system, do what it is, if it is done on herself, she can put it into this, this system.
Right, and that's where you all can verify, so no, Mayor, look at the system, it's right there. Right, 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 right.
Well, Mayor, I don't know if you want to address this, but, uh, what we're looking at is that you, if you, the other app we were talking about, the other way of getting information.
Sure, I, I, I'll just, um, with the app.
Like, when you block yourself and see it.
So we're working on the app as well for the city. Um, where, where people will be able to take a picture of the pothole or the trouble issue, and immediately once they take their picture, it will upload it into our public works department, and it'll go online. So instantly, we have real time on what people have placed in. Uh, so citizens can participate a lot and make sure the city of Selma, uh, is being very responsive when it comes to the issues that we have. So we'll do that with the, um, with the app. But also in the meanwhile, when people just want to just go and take a picture and upload it on the site, they'll be able to do it on the site as well until we get the app completed.
But Mayor, I hate to ask this, but how, how soon this supposed to be taken for you?
Well, we're working on it now.
But we might ask that now.
We just getting data, we can compile the data so we can have something else, the database up so we can have it up and running. But I want to present it to you all before we do all that work in the council. Say, Mayor, what, what about this right here? We want to make sure we get your thoughts and involvement as well.
I love it, I think it's great, but we, we might have to get, and I hope I'm not in the wrong time, wrong place, I said, but we need our work perspective work in order to maintain it. We're going to need some revenues from here.
We, we need all that too. Now, we're doing, we can, the limited resources we have, and that's why we're deploying as much technology as possible to be very responsive to the citizens.
Right, right, because then all this work can be done, then these.
How soon can the city start generating some money about the fiber we got?
Glad you asked that. That's a conversation we would have to have about the wifi that we have in place right now. There's a conversation that was going on with possible partnerships, where people are interested in being tied into the city wifi, uh, or broadband, uh, if you will. So it's a very great opportunity for economic development for the city, and also for our businesses inside the city. They can utilize the same services to benefit themselves as well. So that's an opportunity, and I guess we can have a more in-depth conversation about that, um, in the finance community.
I think, I think that was, I think we need to do more of that, because this is the time to bring those resources in. I mean, it's there, might as well make it available.
Thank you. But, but that's what we're working on, um, to, to economize, uh, broadband. Yes, ma'am.
So it's the, the same broadband as, well, this is, uh, we met with her, uh, this, this one, the Mac, Mac, Mac twelve was talking about.
Well, what happened, the Selma City Council established the Selma Redevelopment Authority. The Selma Redevelopment Authority's purpose is to assist us in projects that the city of Selma working towards. Um, Director Harry Thompson wanted to apply for seventy-five thousand dollars to assist us with our broadband down, our wifi downtown Selma. Uh, the city had an open grant with the DRA, so the, the money couldn't come through the city. It had to go through, um, another agency that was tied to the city. And so they are basically just going to do it for the city. They, they are not authorized to, to do the things that needed. They're in partnership with us to get these things, uh, to take place. It is my hope that they, um, quickly begin to, uh, release the money that has been, been given to them. We've been sending them over a year now.
There's a time limit to it.
Exactly, it's been over a year now. And we've been trying to get, I think President Boarder agreed, agreed to set it on the city behalf, so we can utilize it right now to do even more with broadband, um, downtown Selma. So that's the conversation we can have with them, but no, they were brought into the conversation. It's not something they're, they initiate.
But they have to do it to build a resolution, and I, that's what we've been waiting on.
What's the hope of?
I'm not sure, um, I'm not even sure what the hope is. Councilwoman Thompson, she met with, I'm not sure.
You know, the last time I, I, we met with them, and that's why I was wondering, the last meeting I went to, that was one with that well, and a couple of, uh, other people that deal with their, their wifi. And then she, and I thought that it was in place because she told us it would be good. It would be all over the areas, you know, when tourists coming in, everybody, they'll get, they'll pick up. So I'm thinking the mayor was on the same page that, um, the last time we had meeting.
Well, I think the, the confusion, the confusion is, we applied for this money over a year ago. DRA, at the time, I was in the DRA, um, leadership class, uh, and they told me, we giving you all the money. That's been over almost two years now. And, um, SRA kept holding on to the money. And so we knew we had to move to try to start moving direction. Uh, we still need the money to make it even grander, but we knew when we can, the resources that we have available to get, at least get it up and running. And so we just wait for them to, to come with the resolutions in.
Well, that's the only thing they have to do, Mayor, is get with, uh, that's your family.
If I was told that they would do that, I'm not sure. Okay, so we'll do that, we'll do that. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay, that's great. You got a timeout student like that.
There was some discussion heard that gave this timeless reference about another partnership coming in with an out of town company coming in to help run that. I think that was part of the confusion.
Yes, it was confusion.
It was, it was, you're going one direction, the SRA, I think, was looking at combining something else to go another direction. So that was where a lot of the council folks were at that meeting. I, I kind of pulled back from a little bit.
Can you speak more about that?
No, I was just, it was a gentleman from out of town, he was coming in to kind of partner with us to.
Oh, yes, I brought a gentleman to the table.
So, so that was a little confusing, I think, to her point, in the discussion, because it was what was happening, what is happening, what could happen.
Well, I had, I brought a gentleman to the table to, to manage the project, to oversee the project, to do the project design. Um, Selma Redevelopment Authority came back to me and say, well, Mayor, we can't pay him to do this.
Correct.
So I said, okay, you can't do it, so let's run it through the city then. You all allow the city to do it, and that's been a hell of a holdup. They haven't released the money yet. So we did what we can to go ahead and start moving forward.
And I think that was just to clarify, you know, the time, the meeting with Ms. Wanda, and, and now, of course, you know, SRA is always evolving organization, so you never know what you're giving them.
I was gonna say, me, and, and Ms. Curtis, you know, I heard the same thing, and when I left there, I was under the impression that everything was just, uh, all the eyes have been dotted and the T's been crossed. I mean, this is first I'm hearing about the discombobulation that's taking place with this seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, we need to just move quick past it.
And that's what we've been doing. I'm not sure what the council heard or didn't hear, but what was brought back to us was not what you all heard. Um, it was just, "No, we can't do this right now." That's the conversation we had. But as Councilwoman Young, it's, it's been working on now.
Are you, are you, uh, attending the next meeting?
I'm gonna have what she have on, I thought it was gonna, I thought it was everything was running, I thought we had it, and we was gonna go in, 'cause she said that we have the wi- we have the down wifi.
Right, right, right. It's a city project, though, I think it's important to the council, it's a city project, it's not Salem Redevelopment Authority project, it's a city project. Uh, you all appoint that board, and they are, uh, an entity to just basically to help with other projects that the money can't be given to the city.
The pastor.
The pastor, exactly, exactly.
My main thing is to be provided up.
I think we need to record with the, with the real communication, uh, to, uh, Salem Redevelopment Authority, go ahead and put this money on to the city, so the redevelopment.
Mr. Ford, say, you know, a resolution, I have that for you all, thanks. Um, also, with, um, I want to share with you, um, outside of this, is if we can go to the public safety, uh, cameras. So, tomorrow night, Councilwoman, you have to, y'all have to take all that time, uh, get out of there right now.
I bet you rock the lights, I have game to be in tomorrow.
Hey, congratulations, we do it.
Thank you.
You get a son, that's all, I heard about it, awesome.
They playing to a reading.
Oh, man, look at that, look at that, now that's, that's current, clear.
And that's downtown.
That's what's going on.
So, a part of our smart city is that right now, these are not all the cameras, this, these are a sub-session of the cameras, we got eyes throughout all downtown Salem. Uh, so, if anything happens downtown Salem, we have footage. Now, these not all the cameras, we have more than these dollars. We got other cameras for public safety reasons, can't put on, can't put all the information out there, but as you can see, all of the downtown seven is basically covered.
And, and, uh, have friends?
Well, I'm just, I see council members looking at it.
Yeah, just checking it out. And what happens is they got in here, they're cutting the extra seventy-five cameras, we had them.
So, with the seventy-five cameras, many of those cameras were used to update the analog cameras in the police department.
Okay.
We got these cameras. Some of these are part of the seventy-five cameras you have. They're yet, as we build out, uh, our security, uh, efforts, those cameras are yet being used.
Okay, great, purposeful for one place, if that needs some...
Yes. Yes.
And proficiency toward safety.
Yes.
So, have our seventy-five cameras being used, or are some sitting somewhere?
The bulk of them are used, that they've been, as Councilwoman Boyd was saying, taken out and moved around for better. What is happening is, we in the process of getting more cameras, uh, because, um, cameras are different now. Uh, those cameras were first in two thousand ten. We got cameras now, the technology is so smart, cameras almost gonna live around the block. Uh, uh, thirty, thirty-six degrees that we can do cameras with, and we have some of those, and so, we are yet bringing on the latest technology to replace some, uh, antiquated technology.
I'm asking because I, I do, I need cameras in the area of the entire park, at Cedar Park, the entire park, from, from the tennis court to the, to the walking trail.
See, now you're talking about talk, because here's what we would like to do, with smart technology, put the light, the light system in all the parks we have, so when people are walking, the lights don't stay on all night, but as you walk, the lights light up, and you always can see somebody moving on the trail. But we preserve energy, but at the same time, we provide safety, uh, for individuals. So, we can have lights like that in addition to cameras as well, but we're building out this infrastructure. I mean, this is not something we just going to do tomorrow, but it take resources to do it, but we are working on it. We started in the heart of the city, uh, we would love to branch out and go throughout, whoever want to partner with us to make this reality. But parks is something that we can be definitely, we can start working on, like downtown in the riverfront, it's cameras down there. Everybody know where they are, but they're down there.
It should be.
Like, I can pull it up right now, but I really need to pull it up.
Mayor, you don't understand that, there is no way we can show all that what we have.
Right, right.
'Cause we had some more up, up earlier, they, they buffer, whatever, we just can't show them all, well, it's a lot.
I do want to know those parks that were worked for, 'cause I have two parks there, the playground area, and then Cedar Park, both of there, there's a little bit of spin now.
There's no sign, Ms. Ford.
I just said nineteen eighty-four, it's in the...
But this basically cover city streets. We're not, we're not going to, you know, homes, so we just cover the city streets. Yes, ma'am.
Just like, uh, another day, was that a camera that everybody was placing?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that camera that they were placing, uh, on the corner of the end of the, uh, airport, uh, and church center?
I, I went out there, perhaps it was, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're referring to, perhaps it was, though, because as you can see, um, yeah, all the cameras, well, right now, you don't have all the cameras up here, 'cause some of the cameras, you actually can see the bridge, the bridge, all of them are not up here, um...
The reason why it's...
Yeah, well, yeah. I think you might be talking about, no, this is the working center, that's not the...
No, it's, it, it, at the end of the, uh...
Okay, you were talking about the working center, they might have been going inside the working center.
No, I'm talking about the, the church.
You know, the working center, church center right there, the...
Yeah, the end, where you going on the side of the, uh, the, the church center?
Right.
Right, but if it is, 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 uh, that's my issue.
So, what we're doing, Councilwoman, and now all council members, what we're doing is, um, number one, I think you all appreciate this, one, one thing we want to do is make sure we have eyes in the entertainment district.
Right.
Um, open carry, uh, you know, with alcohol, we're gonna have to make sure we have eyes. Um, one thing you can see is that where we have some, a lot of shooting there downtown, um, if you can see, this is right here where a lot of shootings used to take place at this club.
Right.
We are working on, um, to, to get more cameras up and things, so you can have all of that downtown Salem, so it helps us more with public safety as well, um... Oh, yes. Can I do the zoom in right here, Ms. Curtis? Okay, let's do it right here. I'll be zooming in. What stuff at?
The bar top.
So, Mayor, the accident took place on the corner of, uh...
Yeah, that one zoomed in, Jesse was in there.
So, Mayor, so the accident that took place on the corner of Rawl and Ward Avenue, at the bridge, they'll be able to determine who's at fault, but, 'cause I, I think I seen some, some part of that right here at the bar top there.
Right, we can get finished with that, for insurance purposes, when the accident, we go right to the footage and say, "Well, no, this is what actually happened during the accident."
I got it, I got it.
She blew it up too big.
Somebody took proof.
'Cause they range, they got different cameras and do different things.
I was wondering if they would probably type to say, is it media given, catch litter and, that, litter cameras, litter cameras.
It's a crown on camera.
Yes. We can, we can let you know what war.
Litter cameras.
Bring the whole thing, County.
I think litter cameras.
And of course, you leave right there. Of, of course, with the zoom-in feature, right now, as you, as you see, we got closer to the street view, we can go even closer, right now, the camera, I think, 'cause it raining outside right now, we might have some on the camera, but the pictures are pristine pictures, that you go right in and you can zoom in on the instance. It helps so much with legal issues, with, with other public safety issues you may have. So, there's different things we can do with this technology, and, and we're trying to deploy it eventually over the entire city when it comes to city property, when it comes to city property. Same rate that comes in right now. So, finally, 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 council members, if I can have your attention shortly here, finally, on February twenty-eighth, um, we're having our first mayor's Black Belt Broadband Conference, where we are inviting mayors throughout the entire Black Belt region. They've been calling our office, they're excited by coming to see how Salem can partner with other cities. It's important because we can't wait for the federal or the state government to come in and say, "We're gonna help the Black Belt out." Um, it's important that we help ourselves out. And so, we're reaching out to these other smaller cities to show them what we are doing, and try to find partnership with them, to show them ways they can move forward. Um, we missed out on I eighty-five, I sixty-five, but with this technology, all citizens in the Black Belt can benefit from this type of technology, uh, that we are utilizing it. I would love for council members to come, February twenty-eighth if we can, it's for elected officials, it's elected officials, it's gonna be from eleven to one o'clock on February twenty-eighth, I'll be getting eleven to go off pretty soon. But I have many mayors and council members who will be attending to partner with us, or find ways they can partner with us to provide the kind of technologies that we are providing for the city of Salem. Hey, we the queen city, so go Salem, so goes this entire region.
That's right.
And I believe that we have to pull in our sister cities to make sure that they are growing with us, and that we're not growing alone. So, we'll be doing that on February twenty-eighth at the Convention Center, uh, from eleven to one, elected officials, uh, it's only, only for elected officials, 'cause it's a conversation about government, or elected officials, and things the council members and mayors get to go back and talk about inside their cities.
You gonna talk to your guys?
Yeah, I'll send a lot to y'all, um, about that meeting. I, I would say this, uh, since we got the director, and I'm, I'm gonna be out your way, um, Ms. Curtis, thank you for, for tolerating me to put up with for a while. We got, uh, the director of Salem Housing Authority, uh, here with us this evening, and I'm sure there's something that you're gonna bring up in your report, but, uh, some things we're doing with, with, with the housing authority as well when it comes to this technology, that we are trying to make sure this type of resources is available in public housing inside the city of Salem, uh, which we think is gonna be grand, there's some other projects that the councilman, uh, Johnson and, uh, Mr. Randolph were working on, that we'll be making announcement about pretty soon, but to let you know, the partnerships are growing. Uh, we have local partnerships, Cacori was on board with us prior to the closing, so we have partnerships, um, that are growing, and with Salem Housing Authority, and some of his leadership, that I'm grateful for his leadership, and thank you, sir, uh, for the leadership over there. We have totally different leadership, and, and, uh, Salem Housing Authority, and under his leadership, so far, we are very progressive, moving, uh, public housing forward inside the city of Salem, I think y'all just...
Will the city be, uh, charged or free with, uh, concern out of public housing, you know?
So, that'll be, that's a partnership we're talking about with Salem Housing Authority. So, so the residents, the residents, it, it, it's just might be part of the package deal, but who knows, we still talking about it. But we want to make sure that the families that's in public housing have access, you know, make sure our sons and daughters have access to compete in the twenty-first century, and if we're not doing that, whether we're doing this in the city. And that's what we're doing, um, across the partnership we have, and also the security cameras, we're doing some things we can mention, well, to tie to our police department, we didn't have that in the past. Um, now we have it, we're tying it into the, our police department, we'll be able to do some things when it comes to public safety also. Yes, ma'am?
Y'all wanna talk about it again?
No, we still working through the detail.
No, no.
Okay, yeah, talk about another thing. The guy, the Councilwoman Thompson has had a question right now. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, 'cause I'm very concerned about it. I, 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 I watch you present all of your, your, the new...
Technology.
...new century.
Yes, ma'am.
But is any, if, uh, we can't bring, is this not costing the city any money?
Right now, it's not costing the city a thing.
It ain't gonna cost...
It's gonna help the city bring in more money. This is no string of revenue the city can bring in that we haven't been bringing in.
Okay, I was just, just, wanted to know.
'Cause it's O K, it's O K to this technology.
Well, I wanted to know.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, um, we had, um, services over at the GWC Hall that my point is, um...
It did.
I remember Mr. Green working over there for the services activities, so are we, has that been trashed?
What, what I can say, um, prior to Mr. Randolph being there, those services were terminated.
Okay.
So, under his leadership, we have, the relationship is strengthened again, and we're moving forward.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Well, we got Mr. Randolph here, uh, first of all, thank you, Mr. Randolph, for coming and getting a lot of the seat with you today. The problem, uh, we have, and what we got here is the security management, and talking to Mr. Randolph, our problem is, is in the GWC Hall at Ward Eight, and, and that horse shoe, we have a lot of shooting, a lot of killing, a lot of stuff going on. And Mr. Randolph came up with an idea, and I think it's a great idea, and I'm totally behind it, and I want to get Mr. Randolph to come forth with your mind and explain what we want to do, and we need the council to back us up behind us here. Now, let me get each one of the councilperson, uh, up on here now, where it is, we want to get off the horse shoe. So, that, that's, that's St. Anne, just kind of follow it as much as you can. And, uh, okay, that's St. Anne right here, and, uh, that's the horse shoe, you know what horse shoe is? We're gonna block off St. Anne right here, but we're gonna have an area right here on St. Jump, coming in behind, you know, they're gonna...
Be aggressive.
You, you, it's a gate there, you'll be able to come in there, but just close that already, but, uh, this is Randolph, uh, let's see who we have, uh, all councilmen.
Can we do this alone, everyone into the city?
May have extra that y'all may want to pass on the ground. Okay, uh, but that's, that's the horse shoe here, y'all often look at, we want to hold that off there, there will be a gate right there where they have to like slide over, anybody, the only person that live there will be able to have access to the, but Mr. Randolph was explaining it to you.
Okay, Randolph, you go ahead. Well, uh, good afternoon, everybody, I'm not gonna go over the brief, uh, with the , hey, it's nighttime, uh, as you all are aware, uh, GWC is a troublesome property in the middle, and, uh, we have to do something in order to take back that property. Uh, and so, uh, there are some things on the way that we're gonna do, but in the interim, the horse shoe is our biggest concern. Uh, we have a lot of criminal activity in the horse shoe, we've had two homicides that happened in the horse shoe.
This year.
This year. And so, um, here, Councilman Ford, you have a plan that, um, I want to propose, uh, in order to try to contain the horse shoe. Uh, if you notice at the bottom, on St. Anne Street, that, uh, that's where the council's attention there, St. Anne, where St. Anne and St. Philip connect, I want to close off that street, so it, it will be one way in the horse shoe, one way out the horse shoe. Uh, and what that will do is, it will help the police be able to contain that area more. Uh, if you go around this curve here, where it says new columns, new sidewalk right behind Brown Chapel Church, uh, we're going to remove some sidewalk there, uh, and we're gonna put more fencing, uh, around the horse shoe to contain it, to where, uh, behind the church, well, not behind the church, beside the church, and behind the apartment, there's a field, and that's where, uh, the police are ambushed most time from that field. Uh, and so, we're gonna block off that field where they won't have access to run through that particular pathway, uh, and so, if, if you look at from St. Anne Street to St. Philip Street, all the access points where people can run between buildings, we're taking that, those points from them. So, uh, this plan is basically helping the police, helping the police, uh, in the fact that, uh, it's taking away all the hiding spots, it's taking away from them being, being able to escape. So, they only have two options, either to go out the way they came in, or to run into a department. And so, we are adding additional cameras to the horse shoe as well to get all angles, so if they do run into a department, we'll see what apartment they ran into. Uh, and so, that's a two-fold thing with the cameras. Uh, so, and at the entrance of St. Philip Street, it will be gated in, so really, the horse shoe is gonna be its own community. Uh, it's gonna be gated in, and everybody will have to have their key card in order to get in out the horse shoe. And so, um, today, we're going to have with Councilman Justin, the mayor, the police chief, and the fire chief, uh, and everyone has signed off on this plan, uh, the police chief thinks And everyone has signed off on this plan. The police chief thinks it's a good idea, and the fire chief thinks it's a good idea that we can contain it to try to avoid criminal activity, you know. And one of our biggest issues that we have at GWC is most of the tenants who, most of the people who commit the crimes are not tenants. Their relatives, their friends, you know, boyfriends, all those things. So we're also gonna implement a decal policy. And if you don't have a decal, your car will be towed away. And so, you know, we're trying to use all methods possible, think outside the box of ways to contain that particular property. So, that's my presentation.
Well, one other thing, also, we'll discuss in the project, they have some gates already, they've fenced up already. And what they're gonna do, they're gonna put another vehicle behind the two. That means when they go through, they gotta go like this to get out. And so, you know, this gate here...
Certainly ain't true.
Right, you're correct, exactly. Right, the baby slowing down. At least the officer baby together, we have another gate completely around. That's right, that's right. So we're gonna do that. Also, we think about, we just recently had a one-way coming by my middle funeral. And we might eventually have to close that off too. So right now, we're just trying to slow down the crime in Ward Eight and the GWC home because I feel like the elderly people that live there have been there for many years, even Brown Chapel Church never had a police officer, security guard. But recently, they have been requesting for some security there, so we're gonna need to try to take it back over. And I appreciate Mr. Randolph for what he do to try to make Ward Eight and GWC home much safer than it is now.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes sir.
You mentioned decal, would you stand on that? I mean, I mean after certain hours, time of decal, you know, is it gonna be towed?
Yes, it'll be towed.
After certain hours?
Yes sir.
So that mean like after ten o'clock?
Well, this is the process. If you have a guest over, there's, we'll have guest area parking. And so, no one within this horseshoe should have any guest parking in that area. So the hour should matter. And if it's, if it's during the day and you have a car there, no problem. But what we're looking at is overnight stay, and you know, this area just be congested.
Is the decal, the whole car just just got here?
So it's the whole car?
So, I mean, I'm just trying to, trying to think in my head how this work. Because I don't wanna come through there and drop in, holler at some folks at that door, and I come out, my car gone.
Well, if you're parking the building, you're parking, you know, you know, if your guest doesn't inform you, because they will be informed of this policy change.
So there's no more parking on the street, like Marvishki's?
No, parking will still be there. However, each tenant will be assigned a parking spot based on the number of vehicles in their unit.
I think, I think this is good with it. Public has to be as skilled to match.
Sure, sure, absolutely, absolutely, yes sir, absolutely.
So some Marvish, you need to vote on?
Closing down, St. Anne, St. Philip.
Right, right.
Where, where St. Anne, where St. Anne and St. Philip connect, right in the horseshoe.
Like we go down St. John, maybe a little, this will be going down St. John, maybe a little on St. Philip, go around the curve, be coming out of St. Anne.
Coming out of West Williams?
Right, correct. We won't be coming out there no more. We definitely, we're gonna close that off right there on St. Anne. And, you know, that rip by the street was closed, it completed. They're also gonna cut some of the sidewalks out on each side and make a little, like a pocket sack, a bit wild in there. I think they're also gonna take some of the curb out, and that curb for the fire trucks to be able to come around, also, they're gonna cut some of that out. So it's a lot of work they've invested in putting this in.
St. Philip?
St. Anne.
St. Anne.
And St. Philip. What they're gonna do with St. Philip, they're gonna have entrance going here. A gate.
So they're gonna enter open that by Cross Church?
Right, you know, right there.
And then come on around to St. Philip. You gotta get it all set.
Right, right. But they're gonna make a new turn line.
And the fire trucks will get out.
Right, right, right. Well, fire trucks need to be, because in that curb, curbing while the fire truck. What they're gonna do, they're gonna cut back.
Our, that's, that's.
To, that way the fire truck will come in. Where they're gonna cut, for the downstairs, right, they're gonna cut back, give more room, but yeah. Yeah, yeah, the fireman already been there.
I just want to make sure I understand clearly. So, the proposal is to curtail access on city streets and close city streets on the auspices of safety and security.
Correct.
Right.
So when that happens in other people's wards, I hope the same little consideration we give to those wards as well.
Well, no problem.
Because I can, I can, there's a bunch of streets in my ward, like, you know, I can get a gate.
Well, well, in the last one's question, Velkey came before us to close off the street with all that was happening.
Right, right.
And we didn't have a problem, that cost us one complaint that he done.
We gotta get citizens, is this a citizen's base thing, or is it because of the safety issue, it overrides the citizens' concerns about?
Counsel, we voted on, just the council voted on.
Okay, so we can, okay.
Right, we just need, I can bring it to you all, I don't do without y'all knowing.
Right, right.
But I'm saying I need y'all's support and vote, because this year, I mean, y'all don't even have a problem.
No, no.
Ward Eight got the one to be.
That's just one of the things that the citizens have always wanted to ask me about, can we, can we close this off and make it where you gotta get it approved?
This ain't just, outside we close off this, the street behind this community store right here on Broad.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it was said in those terms to make sure, that's, because that's the gist of it, basically. Just look at curtailing traffic patterns or create pitch points, so we can look at those people coming in out of our areas.
We don't want to close them, I'll just be closing them.
No, no, it's closed for pitch points and security purposes, that's why I made sure I phrase it.
I'm just telling them about Councilman Boney, it takes a, it takes an active account to close a street, so we've closed to the best. Recently, Ward Two, we closed to Ward Three.
So make sure specifically asked and phrased that way, because that's, could play a role in the future as we move forward as council.
That's right.
I think it's awesome, I think it's great.
Yeah, we're looking to.
Well, yeah, that's what it was mixed.
Right, 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 right. That's game, but what we're trying to do, take one step at a time, until the police officer can kind of work that area. That they come up today as well, because like I say, they don't respect that one way. You can, you can sit that one, because they throw a bunch of tickets or wickets out that one way. That's what, maybe, that's what happened, they did.
Broke my team.
That's right, so you said.
To our cookie? Oh, let's go, let's finish up.
I ain't asking you to apologize.
I just want to give Randolph, Councilor Jones, Attorney Jones contract, JR's work and service. Your Ward Eight area, Councilman Johnson, United with the Priest, that's on the center of the.
Correct.
Or it's Attorney Jones for the round of the general, the center of the. Also, both living licenses that you have, Attorney, living have put it both in on the center of the. For first read.
Consent or first read?
First read.
I'm with it for first read.
Yeah, I'm with it for first read.
Who's lying to try?
Uh, Councilman Youngblood?
Maybe, because there's, I'm expecting one to come in my area that I answered, but don't expect it to be on first read. If it's...
These both look like they're on system first.
They are, but like I said, it's on first read, but we have between. I think it's just a change of, I don't know.
Three thousand seven hundred?
Yeah.
Who is it?
I don't know, I'm gonna vote right.
Okay, I cover the citizen's first one, which you want to master.
Yeah. But basically, like I said, we're putting them on first read.
You have mine on there?
What, what you, what you want to show?
You don't think I would?
Well, basically, listen up, Councilman, tomorrow, we're gonna go back to that, that format that we voted on about several months ago.
Right.
Where after the mayor's report, everything basically gonna go through committee. And once I call it a committee, they have...
Oh, it never get it.
Yeah, they have any recommendations, we can vote on it then.
Oh, okay.
And also a part of the process gonna be, if you have any announcements that you need to make, you can make it going after, I can't.
After we get to do our committee?
I think it's prior to, prior to committee report.
When I announce, man?
Uh, I don't have any firm order.
Can you give us a copy of the committee, of members again?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy.
I was about to mention Thomas's committee, but she said it wasn't.
I know, I'll give you a copy of the committees again, and also, I was bringing the orders that we amended several months ago.
Good.
Councilman? Hey, well, you gotta, well, we're gonna talk about our committees tonight, our committee reports tonight.
No, I don't want to, councilman.
Okay, I was just gonna ask you, I think, I've got two things that could probably go on to the business.
It's interesting, okay. It's not interesting, because I had to make sure they had to get the numbers from I.
All right, but I wanted to ask the other, I'm gonna go and put it to these folks, please. Um, one of them is about establishing an arts, what do you call it, arts district. Just, you know, and part of the arts district and part of the entertainment district would overlap a little bit.
That was arts entertaining district?
No, it's an entertainment district. No, we need, but we need an arts district for getting money, yeah, getting grant money and stuff, no.
I thought it was getting the arts entertainment.
We call it arts entertainment, but it's just the entertainment.
I can, I'm sorry.
For, but we need an arts district. And, but anyway, essentially, and it could obviously be amended, but, but it is the, on the west side of Broad Street, from the west side of Water, Alabama, Sella, and Dallas, just the west side down to Laxley Street. Because basically covering the art, the Selma Arts Guild going down to there. And then there's some other places, I know, like Gary Anderson's office, on Selma Avenue, you know, it's something, it's something done with that. So, an arsenal place, so, what do y'all think about that?
What, what are you trying to do?
Just, just naming the arts district, because as we, as, as like arts revive, their community grows, they want to do an arts and residence program. And when you have a designated arts district, like we have a designated entertainment district, that helps a lot when you're trying to get grants from foundations.
So you're trying to enhance anything you want to landish?
Yeah. We're just, we're just saying this area is a designated arts district.
Okay. Well, would, would that affect with the, the area, one thing to the other area?
No, we don't have an arts district.
I know what you're saying, if you're trying to make that district area just, just for that particular area.
No, you can have, or no, you can have two districts inter, overlapping. You can have that. We've got, and have an arts and entertainment district, which we call, call it part of the entertainment district, the arts and entertainment district.
Yeah, it's already a district, right?
Uh huh, okay. Like, especially that there on Water Avenue, where, you know, we have arts revive, and we'll have some, some more places where people can do libations and stuff like that, that they also have.
I probably would think on that question, you do.
Yeah, a lot of people think, think we do already have an arts district, but we don't. But that became real apparent when I was helping work on an arts and residence program that we're working on now. So, we really need to have an arts district as well, so.
While you were talking to President Bowie, we need to, in some of our tourists, when they come into town.
Yes ma'am.
Uh, we need to have, what do those signs come up out of?
Way, the wayfinding.
Plan and develop.
Yeah, wayfinding, planning and develop.
You know, we have tourists, they have, they have the mapbooks, once they come in and they go through the areas. Some of our areas do not have the street name, the area.
No, the actual street names.
But they have a book, the guy that they...
They don't have the street signs up there, you know, what inch count?
And they, and I'm serious, because they asked me, I'm always out, and they was asking me, oh, how can we find this, this area? And I said, well, the street sign will be up, they said, no street sign. So, and that's why I asked you, how can we get those?
We need to end the three hours, true.
Okay, you're right, you're right, I do, because I did, I did, Ward Eight, I replaced about ten thousand dollars of signs, Ward Eight, that came recently, so. Because the poles is what cost me money, because I did about ten thousand dollars in Ward Eight, we paid for them. I did, I replaced, I, I didn't replace.
Ward Eight is a permanent struggle.
Right, and that did recently, it was.
No, no, I was talking about the street sign, I was saying, like, in the area that the tourists are going to, you know, they should have a little signs up there for that area, that they, they come out.
The district, right, so there is though, yours hasn't been designated as a district as of yet.
Not me.
But, but Waterfront, and Old Town, and Ice House, and Riverview, they all have, they all have signs, and each one of their street signs should be color coded for that district based on the color coding on the map that the individual has, depending on where they got. Because there is a color code based on the different districts in the city. Now, the city did spend money years ago to do wayfinding signs, but they never followed up on the signs. I think they're currently sitting at Midstate Advertising in Montgomery, and have been sitting there for...
No, I think that they were destroyed because nobody went and got them.
Well, last time I talked to them, they were there. That's been some time, so.
Okay.
So, so, so they were there, the signpost we bought with them were no longer there, but the signs were still there, so. I know there's a local organization in town that's looking at, at, at putting together a fundraising element to create fundraising, I mean, wayfinding signs to committee, at the community, so, I'm not sure where they are on it, or who they're partnering with to do that, but that's definitely, definitely something we need to have, is those wayfindings. But you can see them at like, if you're going out toward King Street right there, you'll see one, there's one, I think on Church or Lauderdale at the, J.L. Chestnut side. Several ones like that, but they're, they're not, they're very diminutive, they're not huge.
I'm not talking about the signs that you're talking about where the streets are, I'm talking about when tourists.
These are signs dedicated for tourists to come in there and find specific areas based on the color coding of that area, so Riverfront, Ice House, and those historic districts. Those signs were put in place beforehand. When you came across a bridge, there was supposed to be an additional sign that had arrows that led you toward those issues, and then there's another sign that took you further so you could get to a central spot and then go one way or the other. Now, the second part of that was never followed up on, hence the reason why there's only signs on location and not signs when you come across the bridge.
Yeah, because a lot of the tourists, they be having a little pathos, and they be trying to locate, and they were asking me, and you know, that's, that's, that's mostly in Ward Three.
Correct.
District.
And Madden Associates, my company, did all that. We did, and more likely, we did the pantry, you're talking about as well, so. We, we definitely had an interest in that time we were there, we were planning a vote and bought the signs, and did all that for them, so.
And Mr. President, if you said, I don't need to interrupt you, was that?
That's all over there, I don't know.
Okay, and I'll get one more, and this is just expanding the, Selma Development Authority's ability to, their footprint from the Bench Creek Arena to the Elliot Speed Arena, otherwise not the City Arena. If, you know, if they have a consensus of the board, if they need to, because they are a physical.
See some more activity from that, so we can make a decision.
Your building committee, I want to, you can just give your report, if you have anything that we need to vote on, you can just put it to the floor.
Well, I do have something I need you to vote on, I need to bring to your attention.
Yes ma'am.
I have an area down in Blue Heaven, it's on King Street and Pedal Street. Well, back in the days, they made this a paved street, it has no name. The area that, where they paved it at, that is not a street. And we've been having a lot of, where people come into our neighborhood and, you know, we have people that live there, and it's dark up in there, and we've been having a lot of problems, you know, you're going, people in their houses, and they got people in town. So what the neighbor had asked me, they would like to put, like we put the, your fence, it's not a street. We want to block those two areas off to keep those cars from coming back in there. But it's not, it's never been a street, it's always, it was just dirt paved, and back in the days, they, uh...
You just want to put something just to avert?
We want to cut it off, keep people from going back there on King and Pedals.
What we probably need to do is...
It's not an effort.
Uh, Mr. Henry, to see what he'd have, I mean, that can be a problem, we can just get better and do it.
Yeah, because I don't want nobody to get shot.
Text me here, text me what you're talking about, just clear, and we can just, you know, maybe just take care of that for you, okay? Anything else? So we're looking at roughly about eight, nine, ten items on the center agenda tomorrow. Then you go through committee reports at the recommendation that you have, and you can just hopefully, we won't be there tomorrow. Because the whole objective was to move it to Monday night, so you can go ahead and, with all the majestic of things, like Tuesday night, just move forward with the vote.
And then a word for word, yes?
Yes ma'am.
No, no.
It's hard to do that, honestly.
Yes ma'am.
I want to know, how do I go by, can you email the mayor and set up a meeting for me, for the, the Vons Minima Committee to meet?
Okay.
Um...
Okay, I'll do it in the morning, I'll send you your copy.
I need, so I can contact them?
Right, I'll make you, I'll send you your copy. Councilwoman, Ms.?
Councilmembers, this is just a quick announcement. Selma High School is our only public high school, they, yeah. Selma High School is our only public high school, they won the area championship last week. They are now in the sub regionals tonight at seven P.M., and tomorrow at seven P.M., we play T-Town. We're playing, uh, Tuscaloosa?
Oh wow.
Uh, here, at Philharmon, and we hosted the areas last, last week, and we're hosting the sub regionals this week. Uh, here, they fill the corner, and we hosted the, uh, the areas last, last, uh, week, and we're hosting the sub-regional this week. So, tonight at seven, tomorrow at seven, sub-regional. If they win, they go to the central regionals, and then it's the road to the final four.
Girls and boys?
Girls and boys, and we have not been to the final four in quite some time. It's been a while, it's been a while.
So, hopefully, we can, we can do, Councilwoman, President, Pro Tem, honor tomorrow, have a meeting, let's get out, so see, we can go over there.
Oh, I will be, oh, my God.
Hey, we can go to that chill song over there. All right, all right. All right, thank you, all right.